Call this meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors to order. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How are you, Mr. Powell?
Good.
If you would, please do the roll call.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Here.
Ms. Sadler?
She can't, we have to go in first.
I cannot hear yet.
Oh, you have, okay, Ms. Larson?
Here. Okay, with that, I would ask for a motion to have Ms. Sadler join us remotely. That would be due to medical, adhering to social distancing to avoid exposure spread of the coronavirus in response to a declared state of emergency, so.
Motion.
And just to clarify, there is a resolution that for you to adopt to establish a remote participation policy.
Thank you. So, is there a motion, though, to allow Ms. Sadler at this?
Motion.
Thank you, does that need to be a voice?
Roll call.
Roll call, Ms. Powell?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye. Okay, Ms. Sadler?
All right, well, thank you for that. And due to ongoing bronchitis, I assure everyone, I'm fine, but I do have some ongoing bronchitis, so out of an abundance of caution, I'm opting to step down as the presiding officer for this meeting, and I designate Ms. Larson as vice chair as the presiding officer for the meeting.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move to presentations.
Do we need to adopt that other resolution as well?
I believe we do.
It's under board considerations.
It's, oh wait, not further, number four.
Right, well, Ms. Larson, I would move that we amend the agenda to bring that item to the front, so there's no question about Ms. Sadler's participation remotely.
Okay, that's fine. So, we have several, do you want to move?
Just that item, just that item, so that we can take care of that. I think we've all seen the resolution that sets out a policy very similar to the county's policy on electronic participation in meetings, and I would move that resolution after any discussion.
Okay. Roll call on that.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye. Okay, thank you, sorry. Presentations.
No presentations and no public comment.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the consent calendar, we have a one item, then it's adoption, is there a motion?
The adoption of the consent calendar.
Thank you so much.
You can do that on a voice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Public hearings?
No public hearings.
Okay, that brings us to board considerations, and number one, that's the, is that the one we just, I apologize, but that, it's, it looks like it's a little bit more than just allowing remote participation, but is that the one that we just passed?
I thought you just passed the remote participation policy. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I think we need to move forward with this one, yes.
Okay.
So, this is an emergency resolution in response to COVID-19. This resolution, for the most part, affirms actions that I have already taken under my authority under a state of emergency, but am asking the board to affirm those actions. Among the items that this resolution addresses, it affirms the policy that the JCSA will not disconnect any customers as long as the state of emergency stays in place. It also authorizes the suspension of certain parts of the personnel policy to allow me to implement the emergency staffing plan that I have implemented and sent the details of to you in an email last week. And it further establishes a formal line of discussion, not discussion, of succession, and it also authorizes me to prohibit citizens from congregating around Service Authority facilities. So, that's a brief summary of the resolution, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions?
If I have any question, I do want to say that I think it's a very wise decision to suspend any discontinuation of services during the emergency that we're confronting right now, and the last thing people need is to have to worry about the availability of safe public water.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency staffing plan authorization and address a local emergency.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
And Ms. Larson?
Aye. That brings us to contract award, server hardware and software replacement in the amount of $168,205.
This first, there's two contract awards on your agenda tonight, this first one is for us to replace our servers, our servers are nearing the end of their useful life, they're also nearing the maximum of their capacity, these are the servers that keep our GIS information, our SCADA information, so they're critical to our operation. I, if the board does adopt this resolution, my intent, given the developments over the last week, are to defer this purchase for a while, but I cannot defer it indefinitely, so I would ask the board to still adopt the resolution, so that when we get to the point that we have to act, I will be able to. But for now, I will not execute this purchase right away until we get a little better handle on what our revenue and expenditure situation is.
Questions or motion?
Move the adoption of the contract award.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye. That brings us to number three, contract award elevated storage tank ES1 repair, $300,000.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this contract award is to make some repairs to the elevated storage tank in Stonehouse, there are some leaky pipes on the inside of that tank, unlike the server replacement, this item does need to pursue with all haste, both because there's some integrity issue with the tank itself, and also because of the fact that we want to try to have this repair completed before the beginning of our peak season. So, I'm recommending approval of this contract award, and again, I would proceed with this purchase right away.
Questions or motion?
Motion to approve the contract.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Powell?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
And Ms. Larson?
Aye. That brings us to resolution authorizing the insurance and sale of revenue bond, Series 2020.
I would begin by saying that with us by teleconference today are Courtney Rogers, our financial advisor with Davenport Company, Martha Warden with our bond counsel, Hunter Andrews-Kirth, and Ms. Luton, our assistant general manager, is also on the line. I will introduce this item briefly by just saying a few things, despite the decline in interest rates generally through the economy, the municipal bond market does not necessarily react the same. Since the presentation you received last month on this item, the assumptions that were presented at that presentation are no longer valid, the interest rates for the municipal bond market have gone up pretty significantly since then, due to the fact that investors are moving to cash and not purchasing municipal bonds at this particular moment. We had considered deferring this item, but our financial advisor has recommended that the board go ahead and adopt this resolution with the idea that it would give us the flexibility to act quickly should market conditions change. The resolution that was in your original board packet has been changed slightly to also allow a bank loan as an option to move forward in addition to a public sale, so it affords us a little more flexibility in that regard as well. My commitment to you is that if you do adopt this resolution and give us that flexibility to move forward if markets change, I will certainly be in touch with each one of you before we actually act. But we're recommending you go ahead and adopt the resolution to give us that flexibility to move forward should the markets change. With that, I'm going to ask Mr. Rogers if he has anything to add. Courtney, are you there, and do you want to add anything?
I would, thanks Doug, yes. Hello, everybody, so Doug's right, so, you know, obviously we're in unprecedented times here, and we've seen some very unusual things happening in our marketplace, both on the equity side as well as on the bond side. While you might look at the treasury market and say, when munis always follow treasuries, that's not always true, and what we've seen, if you've seen anything in the news, is basically a liquidity issue in the municipal market. Folks are pulling money out of the bond funds at record levels over the last couple of weeks, and so there were more sellers than buyers, and as, I like to use the analogy, if you're trying to use a seller a used car at, say, $10,000, and nobody's buying, you lower that price to $8,000, or $6,000, or $5,000, until you find a buyer, and that's what happened in the bond world, and as you lower prices in the bond world, the interest rates go up. And so, that's what we've seen, we've seen basically a dislocation of the marketplace over the last couple of weeks. But I will say this, we have seen on the bank side, the banks have not raised their rates, and that's why we asked bond counsel to adjust our resolution and add the ability to do a direct bank loan. So, actually, some of the rates that we've shown, that we've talked about a month ago are actually still in the ballpark when it comes to the bank side. And the reason we didn't do the banks before was because the public market rates were a little bit better than the bank world, because banks are paying more taxes than they were back pre-17 Tax Act, so, but as a result of this dislocation of the market, it's kind of flip-flopped. So, we wanted to go ahead and push forward and at least get permission to move forward with letting basically Doug, and he can obviously talk to you guys offline to make sure everybody's comfortable before we move forward with any type of public sale, and if we do a bank deal, we'll actually bring it back to you, have a rate in hand, and then you can say yea or nay, and it doesn't, you know, we're not going to send you a bill if it doesn't work out. But I will say this, you might say, well, if rates are a little higher, why don't we want to do this? Now's the time, we want to have cash, especially in light of, if you're not disconnecting people, people aren't paying their bills, you want to have cash on hand, the last thing you want to do is spend it on a project, and then not have liquidity yourself. So, I think it's even more important to actually go and procure this from a loan standpoint, so that you have cash in case you need it, because who knows how long this is going to last. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Anyone want to make a motion?
Okay.
Haven't had a motion yet, Mr. Powell?
Motion for approval?
Thank you.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
And Ms. Larson?
Aye. Thank you, so you'll keep us in the loop on?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you for being proactive as well with, you know, having a couple of different options out there, appreciate it, and appreciate your partners that are working with you on that.
Thank you.
Any board requests and directives?
I'd just like to take a minute to ask about, I know that Mr. Powell's been briefing us on what actions the Service Authority's been taking, but I think it would be helpful for the public to know what we're doing, especially knowing that a number of our employees who are able to are teleworking, but that we know that with the JCSA, there are always crews out in the field, and just to talk a little bit about what kind of practices are going on there to make sure that our workers are safe.
Sure, so, we have several different arrangements for different groups of employees. For employees that can telework, they are in fact teleworking. For the folks at Five Forks Water Treatment Facility, we have implemented a policy where no more than two of our waterworks operators will be at that facility at any one time, trying to keep them as apart as we can. We have a couple of small offices, our warehouse and our backflow office where we have two employees each, and we only have one there at a time right now. And then, you know, our field employees comprise about half of our employees total, and what we have done is we've basically split our field crews into two teams, with one team working one week and the other team working the other week. And the team that's working one week, they're working their regular work week, and then they're on call for the rest of that week. So, they're working 40 hours a week, and then they're on call the remaining 124 hours of that week. And then, the following week, it switches, and then the Team B or Team Two comes in, and they work 40 hours, and they're on call for the remainder of the week. When it's your week not to report, you're still on call for the 40 hours of the week during the business week. So, my logic in all of this is that with these groups in the field, we have small groups of employees with specialized skills, and I think it's important, not only, obviously we don't want our employees to get sick, that's most important, but the other thing we have to be concerned with is if one does become ill, how many would then end up having to be quarantined as a result? And if we get multiple employees in the same section that are either ill or quarantined, it can have a pretty profound negative impact on our ability to operate. So, this is a plan that our senior management staff talked over for a couple of days, and then we ultimately decide, we considered a number of different plans, but this was the plan that we ultimately agreed on that would provide the most separation between staff, and especially considering that these staff share vehicles and equipment and those sorts of things. So, the same group of people's working one week, and then a different people, a different group of people is working the next week. And if you're not on site, you're on call.
Thanks very much for that explanation, I think that's a very sensible policy to be following, and appreciate the hard work that went into developing it, and I know that you consulted with the employees who would be affected by this, and that we've got a clear idea here that folks are being careful, and that we are going to be able to respond to any needs that the Service Authority has, as long as we can keep folks aware of the importance of staying healthy.
I will also say what I have told to the staff, which is I do not necessarily think that the staffing plan we have today will be the staffing plan we always have, I suspect conditions will change, we will have to be flexible to address those changes, and I appreciate the flexibility that the board's affording us to make changes as we see fit as things change.
Any other board requests or directives? Mr. Powell, do you have a general manager's update?
I do, I had a couple of things I wanted to share. First of all, I-
I'm sorry, just one second, I just want to make sure, Ms. Sadler, did you have any request?
No, I just, the only thing I would add that I appreciate all of your work, Mr. Powell, ensuring the safety of the public and of staff during this difficult time that we're all experiencing, you've been exemplary in representing the county with the James City Service Authority, and I just want to thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Sadler?
Just two things that I wanted to mention, the first one fairly briefly, the second one a little more involved, but the first one is I want to emphasize the water supply is safe. I have sent some information to you last week that came from the AWA, but I just want to reemphasize that coronavirus is not a waterborne pathogen, so it does not pose a threat to the water supply. But in addition to that, the normal treatment procedures that we have in place and that other public water suppliers have in place, the normal treatment procedures are effective in disinfecting this particular virus. So, I just want to say the water supply is safe. The second thing I wanted to address in slightly more detail is finances. I have suspended many of our capital projects, all but necessary operating expenditures at this point, until we get a better handle on the impact on our revenues. I've also implemented a policy, any expenditure over $1,000 requires Ms. Luton's approval, any expenditure over $5,000 requires my approval. And trying to estimate what the effect of this would be on our revenues, Ms. Luton has done a lot of analysis on this in a very short period of time, and I appreciate the work that she's done. We looked at the effect of the 2008 recession on the Service Authority's budget, and one of the lessons that we seem to learn in that is the sensitivity of tap fees to what's going on in the economy in general. And as you are aware, we were already trending behind our budget estimates for tap fees. So, we've made an assumption at this point, we're going to, for budgeting purposes, for projecting for the rest of the fiscal year, at the moment, we're going to assume that we're not going to collect any more tap fees. Now, obviously, that's the worst-case scenario, and it shouldn't be that bad, but we do think it's going to be pretty bad. So, if we assume that there's no tap fee collection for the rest of the fiscal year, it would leave us with about a $1.9 million deficit in tap fees. As you know, those tap fees go into the capital budget, as you also know, we've been reducing our reliance on tap fees over the years, that was one of the recommendations from the previous rate study, and we've been implementing that. So, I think the impacts are mitigated some, but still, that's a pretty big chunk that we may have to address, and that's why I've specifically targeted some capital projects to try and put a hold on for now, until we get a better handle on what the impacts will be exactly. On the operating side, we didn't necessarily think that 2008 was relevant, this particular situation seems to have resulted in more unemployment more quickly. Certainly in 2008, we didn't implement a policy where we weren't going to turn your water off if you didn't pay your bill, so I think we really felt like we needed to come up with a different methodology for those estimates than just looking back at 2008. We've looked at what some of the projections are from some of the national banks, and what they expect GDP to do over the next quarter, we sort of used an average of those, and our assumption at this point is that we're going to see about a 15% reduction in operating revenue, volumetric and fixed charges. We're also assuming, and this would be a discussion for another day, not necessarily today, but if this event does go on for a while, I would probably make a recommendation to you to ban irrigation, because, you know, with, we don't want to put any more stress on the system than we need to, you know, things break, if, you know, you need more chemicals, if supply chains dry up, I think if it continues to move, if it continues for a lengthy time, we would probably say we don't want to put any more stress on the system than we need to. So, for our assumptions that we're making today, we're going to assume no irrigation, that obviously affects our revenue. But those are the assumptions that we're using right now to estimate what the revenue impact will be, and then we're still in the process of really taking a harder look at trying to identify what expenditures we can cut, and those sorts of things. So, that's all very sobering, I do want to end, I guess, somewhat of a positive note, which is I think the Service Authority is about as prepared as it could be for a situation like this. We do have $50 million in a reserve fund, of that $50 million, almost $16 million is undesignated. So, we are, we, I don't know that anybody can say they're prepared for something like this, but I think we're in as good a position as we could possibly be with our reserves and having some flexibility to address the impact that I think that we will have on our budget.
Oh, so, you say there's no, we don't have to do it today, but when would we, so say we meet two weeks from today, and we haven't heard an end, there can be one, would you want us to take action on that day? And then, I'm curious, how exactly do you enforce a ban on irrigation?
Sure, well, I don't think any action would be required before your next regular meeting, assuming you have one, but I don't think we would need to act in two weeks, but probably a month would be more, would be more in line with what I'm thinking. So, in terms of enforcing a ban on irrigation, we would have to make some decisions, I mean, we can send people out and actually monitor that, whether we would want to go that far or not, with other things that are going on, if that would be a priority for staff, I'm not really ready to make that decision yet, but we would certainly be able to discontinue submeter credit, which would, I think, be a very strong incentive for folks not to irrigate, because we would not process submeter credit applications if we've put a ban on irrigation in place.
Wouldn't you say that our previous experience has been that even though we don't necessarily go out and actively cite people for irrigating, there's a strong social pressure in neighborhoods when somebody is violating that kind of a ban on irrigation?
Question and comment, thank you very much for looking at our finances, that's what we're doing at the county as well, we're trying to figure out, okay, where are we going to be, how are we going to get there, what do we need to find out that we need to know today, and I would like to almost every meeting have just an update in your management report on, just telling us, okay, this is where we're at, this is what we're seeing, and I'm sure you're anticipating that, and just kind of keeping us on the front lines of, okay, ladies and gentlemen, we have this, or we don't have that, so we're going to have to change course, so that we can change course quick enough that it doesn't affect the citizens that maybe we use our reserves, and that's why we put it in there, and have, you know, done so well, and trying to keep that money aside for, not necessarily knowing this item was coming up, but an item of some sort may happen to us. And so, I think that's very important for the citizens, though, too, that we're not only working with all the issues with this virus, but what happens after the virus is gone, because one day it'll be gone, and, you know, it'll be something in the past, and hopefully, you know, everybody will stay as healthy as possible during this process, but eventually, this will, this too will end, and what do we do when it does end, and what position are we in, and how financially do we, you know, swim through it? So, thank you for that, I appreciate that very much.
Right, Ms. Sadler, any other comments? All right?
Fine, fine, thank you.
Sure, absolutely, so-
Madam Chair, move to adjourn this meeting to 5:00 PM on April 14th for the budget public hearing at 5:00 PM.
There's been a motion, Mr. Powell, do we do that by all saying aye?
That's roll call. Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Put your hand to Mr. Eisenhower.
He called order without the hand.
Well, maybe not.
Okay.
Doug, do you get these? Okay.
Those are the sterilized versions.
Thank you. Chair. Yeah.
I'm still connected, right?
Yes, thanks.
Well, by phone you are. Got to keep them guessing.
That's right.
Ms. Chair, I think our video crew is ready. Whenever you're ready, they said they could roll right in.
Call to order this meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors for a work session, Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Here.
Motion carries.
And I believe we have to have a motion to allow Ms. Sadler to participate remotely due to her illness. Motion for approval? Motion for approval? Stevens?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, Sue, you're a part of the meeting.
Thank you.
We are out to board discussions, and we are going to start with the emergency ordinance, an ordinance to ensure the continuity of government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, what you have before you tonight is an emergency ordinance that provides for the continuity of government in times of emergency. It's three main sections, one involves management succession, so each manager of every department chose basically three successors in case one or two people get sick. This is important because the board actually appoints a number, or at least verifies a number of these positions, if we have one or two go down with an illness, at least we won't have to be running back to you to try to fill that spot temporarily. Also does pretty wholesale suspension or extension of a lot of the timelines that are in place. One of the things we found out, really my whole office has been working on this, what we found out in drafting this thing, there's a lot of deadlines tucked in a lot of different places, and this tries to address all of them, because we just understand there may be times where we don't meet those. And then finally, on an emergency basis, allows you to have some limitations on person-to-person contact involving not only people that would be coming into your boardroom, so we can limit that, not just by the number of people that can fit in the room, but by the number of people, as you see, that can be about six feet apart, and it also allows you to do emergency online-only meetings. To date, you haven't done one, but at least that'll be an option for you. This particular ordinance is adopted on an emergency basis, so we didn't advertise it, so in there requires us to put it on your next agenda and advertise it properly, which we'll do. Once that ordinance is adopted, it can be in place for six months. Of course, we can amend or adjust that as necessary, hopefully, we won't need it for the full six months, but it's there if we do. Happy to answer any questions that you might have, and if not, I recommend adoption of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Just to confirm, this is a, the formal, since we didn't have public notice, this is a formal readoption after public notice of this that we did at the earlier meeting.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, you can adopt this one, and it can be in place for a short period of time, and then when you readopt at your next meeting, it can be in place for six months.
I just want to take a moment to express my appreciation to Mr. Kinsman and his staff for putting together this very detailed ordinance, so that we have the opportunity to function effectively in the middle of this crisis, that we've still- effectively in the middle of this crisis, that we've still got continuation of government. And I know it's complicated and legally kind of maze to work your way through. So there's an enormous amount of work that's gone into this, and I feel really confident that this is going to get us through.
Thank you, Mr. McGlinnan. And to reiterate, my whole office has been working on this. There's, there's a lot of pieces in here, and I couldn't have done it without them.
I would concur with that as well. Thank you, Adam, and your whole team for taking care of this for us.
Thank you, Ms. Sadler.
I'll move the ordinance.
Yes, we have a motion.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. We are now to COVID-19 updates from staff.
Mr. Chairman, as you requested, we discussed, we were going to do some similar updates to what we did last time. I have our fire chief, police chief, social services director, communications manager, and they'll come up and give you a sort of a brief update, any questions you have. And then we'll have some closing comments as well about things that are going on within the county. So Chief Ash?
Good afternoon. So just give you a quick update. You've probably seen the latest maps released every day from the Department of Health at noon. James City County is currently at 37 confirmed cases, and unfortunately, two of our citizens have passed away. So we're continuing all of our conversations that we have with the Virginia Department of Health, Department of Emergency Management, and our other partners here in the localities here in the peninsula, also with our three hospital systems represented here. And we're having those conversations daily. We're continuing to operate out of the regional center I mentioned last week when we met, to talk about how we're coordinating that flow of information. As you're aware, there's been some challenges related to HIPAA and getting flow of information of positive cases. And despite a lot of our efforts that we've tried, certainly members of the board and Mr. Stevens have tried, we can't get past some of those HIPAA requirements. So that information flow has been limited for, for those challenges. At this point, we're still monitoring our PPE situation. Again, you've probably seen on the news, that's a nationwide challenge, not just here for James City or on the peninsula. We have placed several orders for us, for our equipment, that we have ship dates for, so we believe we're going to have those. And those are staggered out over the next couple of weeks. Virginia did receive a portion of the Strategic National Stockpile. But as you can imagine, when you take that stockpile divided up amongst the state, the percentages based on hospital facilities getting a larger portion, by the time it gets down to firing EMS, our regional EMS council got a very, very limited supply. That supply was so limited that they elected to hold on to it for an emergency. So a department calls them and says, we're basically out or almost out. There's a request form they can get to get their portion of that supply. So we don't believe that's really going to hit the mark on where we need to be backing up our PPE. We're still working through all of our channels. Representatives at the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, the logistics section are continuing to work their channels to try to find, certainly in the governor's press conference today, he mentioned a number of efforts from manufacturers in the state to potentially switch what they're manufacturing and focus on respirators and surgical masks. So more to come on that as we monitor that situation in the next couple of weeks. So happy to take any questions you have.
What you've mentioned, 37 confirmed and two, I thought we had three fatalities in our James City County, didn't we?
There's one in Williamsburg.
Yeah, there were five within our area. There's six on the VDH website. I believe there are actually seven fatalities in the state today, but there's six on their website. Five of them are our region. I think three were us.
Yeah, I thought it was.
York and Newport News, maybe.
I think there was one in Williamsburg.
I thought it was one in Williamsburg, two in James City, one in York, one in Newport News.
Well, it just sort of illustrates the difficulty in keeping up with the information. We're just not getting the flow. And so I guess my other question is, how are you doing with staff? Do you have any staff that have been exposed or quarantined, or any issues with that going forward? Because I know you're out meeting and dealing with the public a lot.
Sure. So, yes, thank you for that. So early on, when we first started ramping up our questions through the 911 Center to help screen which calls, some of those, you can imagine presented with different signs and symptoms. So we initially had a couple folks that were potentially exposed. There's some discussion about a contact versus an exposure. So maybe we may have been on a call with someone who was potentially in exposure, but we weren't with them for a sustained period of time, or weren't within that six-foot distance. There's some guidance now on the Virginia Department of Health website talking about 15 minutes. If you're within that six-foot contact for 15 minutes for healthcare providers, then that kind of bumps up a level. There's a low, medium, and high exposure. So we did transport a patient that eventually became a positive case. When we worked backwards, we realized that we had encountered the individual several shifts before. So we initially had some folks out on quarantine. Since then, some of the testing has come back and relieved all those. So today, we haven't, we no longer have any providers that are out on quarantine. Our folks have basically gotten to where they're wearing their masks, or N95 respirators and surgical mask on the majority of our calls, because we are seeing some folks show up, or at least hearing from our hospital systems, that the signs and symptoms aren't exactly the fever and cough and trouble breathing. There may be some other ways. So we're doing a precautionary measure. We are still trying to conserve as much of that as we can to make sure that our PPE supply lasts until we can get those other shipments. But today, we don't have any, any of our officers on, or our folks on quarantine.
Any questions? First of all, thank you very much for all the effort that you're putting in, and that the folks on your team are putting into making sure that we get the best information, that we are responding appropriately. I know this is, these are long days and not a very comfortable kind of situation to be dealing with, with thinking about your families at home and the rest. So thank you all for that tremendous amount of work that you're doing for the county and citizens. I did have a couple of questions. The first was, you know, we've seen these numbers, and we know that disproportionately, we have cases in James City County compared to the rest of the state. You know, I think, I think we're not quite the largest number of cases of any jurisdiction anymore, which is good to see. I feel, not that we want to see it happening elsewhere, but it's coming down proportionally a little bit. I see a statewide number for hospitalizations. Do we know how many hospitalizations there are locally?
So as one piece of information, we're trying to narrow down from the hospital systems. We're getting good information from them each day now on patients under investigations, what they call PUIs, and positive cases that they have. And we're trying to help understand a little better how many of those positive cases or patients under investigation are at home, quarantined, or on self-isolation or quarantine, and how many of those are in the hospital. And that's going to focus our efforts for the next couple of days, is really getting that flow, that type of information. We've built the relationships with the hospital systems. We're all participating in our conference call, or in-person meetings in the mornings, certainly with safe distances. But we're capturing that information, and we just need to start refining that down a little better so we can understand. You know, the question I asked was, so we have 37 cases, two of those deaths, of the other 35, are all 35 at home, are all 35 in the hospital? We know they're not all in the hospital, because we know certainly folks that they're not in the severe cases, they're encouraging them, they're going home. They don't need to be at the hospital. So we don't have that exact number yet, but hopefully this week, we'll be able to capture that data a little, a little better, know where, a better idea where they are.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right, that it'd be so helpful to know that. I mean, the number of hospitalizations that are reported on the VDH website essentially is equivalent to the total number of cases that we have. So the statewide number for hospitalizations is pretty much the same as James City County's number. So obviously, not all of those hospitalizations are here. It suggests a relatively small number of cases are in hospitals anywhere across the state in relation to the number, total number of cases. And I think that would be helpful for folks to know. It would also be helpful to know how many people are now testing negative or having, you know, managed to come through this in the, in the general population, so that we've got a sense of the way this disease is spreading and what the ultimate disposition is on some of this.
We have asked in several of those conference calls, I know it came from some of the CAOs as well, about wanting to start to hear about cases that are now recovered. And I think that's an important number for, that's another important public message to get out there as well.
Right. I also wanted to ask about, let's see, you know, we've heard from, I've heard from some folks about issues like the policies at funeral homes. And I understand that there is guidance on funeral homes, and several of our facilities are practicing the notion of limiting to 10. Others are using a slightly larger number that is allowed, or with the guidance that CDC provided, I guess, had a somewhat larger number of people involved. But do we generally get the sense that people are abiding by the 10-person rule?
That's, I believe, maybe Mr. Stevens might be able to add a little more to that. But generally, what I'm understanding is, folks are, those that, essential facilities, those facilities per the governor's order, I guess goes into effect at midnight tonight, that are able to keep less than 10, they're able to stay open. And there is some, some guidance of what actions are appropriate, that if they are not, you know, not abiding by the 10, that we ask them to disperse. And certainly, we're doing that. It's easier for us to do on county facilities, a little more difficult when it's out in public-type facilities.
And I'm just trying to think, there may be something else that I think of before we get finished. There were a couple of things that I was, I was wanting to just sort of raise, because people had brought them to me. I know that there are some people who are concerned, that people are continuing to come visit in the area, or people who went away for the winter are returning to the area. I, you know, this is always a tricky situation, because obviously, we're an area that depends on visitors. But this is not the time to visit Williamsburg necessarily. We don't have any indication that we're experiencing any difficulties from that perspective, though.
I don't know that I have any information to see if our time shares or some of the more tourism-related, I don't know that I have those, that information to know if those are up or down, or kind of compared to March of last year. I know that our public messaging continues to be the same, that we're really about investing the next few weeks to flatten that curve. We know there's still going to be a spike to the curve, but how high that goes is really what we're trying to, and the Department of Health, again, at the 3 o'clock conference call we were on today, Dr. Julian, the local health director, was really enforcing the same thing, of really putting the effort and the commitment now to the things that all of our localities are doing to keep that curve as flat as possible, knowing that a spike is coming at some point.
You're more or less leading the effort on this side, this aspect of the whole crisis. So there are some other issues that I'd like to kind of explore with some of our staff about messaging and rationales for decision-making on matters other than the health crisis that's so central to what you're working on right now. But thank you very much for everything you're doing.
Thank you for everything that you're doing. Probably a question for the chief when he comes up, chief of police. I believe, though, if you do not, if you continue to gather in 10 or more, and you do not disperse once you've been asked, I believe that is a class-one misdemeanor because of the governor's issuing this new, now, I don't know how, you know, he'll probably tell me how he plans to deal with that.
I'll defer to chief round, but I believe that's correct.
Yes. I was wondering if you knew what, how many requests for testing the hospitals and doctor's offices were getting now? Are they the same, at the same volume they were getting last week? And are there enough tests? Because we, Centerra shut down for a bit, then they reopen. What's, what's the status of the testing?
So I'm told testing is becoming more and more available. So there are some other places coming online. If you've done any search around the internet, certainly there's a flood of information out there. There are some folks working on a 45-minute test. And if that becomes, is approved and becomes widespread, that's really a game changer. It's now, a lot of times, where folks, what I believe, some of the increase we saw over the weekend or yesterday, was really tied to people that were tested maybe even a week before that, right? So that curve, as it goes up, is really offset by a week based on the lag time in testing. So as we move forward in the next weeks or months, being able to get that testing down, I think we'll really see a dramatic change. As I understand, the real issue with testing is, or has been anyway, swabs. So it takes a specific swab that has certain amount of suspension that's done for testing, for influenza and those types of thing. The availability of the swabs was the issue. But I understand that at least Centerra here was able to firm that up. That's why they closed early one day and had to reopen the next. But they've been able to firm up some of those swab issues. And I don't think that, that supply chain is the, is the limiting factor now. But how long does that last? Again, everybody's competing for supplies. You know, I think one of the unique things, a lot of times in emergency management, fire, police, and there's things we do, we always, we do tabletops, we're doing real drills, we always rely on calling for resources from the state level, or from the federal level, or from outside of our area. There's always some other state that's not affected. And I think in this case, it's so widespread, trying to take like, things like the Strategic National Stockpile and divide that up to all the states affected, you end up with a very small piece of that pie, where we wouldn't have had that issue if it's more like a hurricane that's affecting only the East Coast. So I think that's some of the challenges in getting those supplies is really the nationwide. But as I understand now, testing is, you know, they're certainly not ready to test everyone who walks in. There is still criteria, but that testing is becoming more and more available.
So I did, last night, I was able to be a part of a conference call with, that the governor's office did, Secretary Lane, Secretary Carey, Secretary Moran. They said exactly what you're saying about personal protection equipment, and how it's desperately needed. And they're working on that, but we only got 10% of what we need. And so they are, they are working on that. The question also came up, not so much from a board of supervisors member that lived in an area like ours, but one that lived in a rural county. I guess they have a lot of campgrounds where they are, and people are coming to camp. But if they get sick, they don't, a lot of counties have had hospitals close through the years, because they could not support a hospital. What do they do with those visitors that they're, that are unable to get health care in their locality? This was last night, so something very, could have changed, but that was something they had not thought about yet. And so they had not really addressed was visitors. Because I don't, I think we could probably get a hotel occupancy, and I think hotels here would tell you that they're hurting. I'm not sure. People may still very well be coming to time shares here. And I haven't, I haven't gotten an update on that. But I think the big, the big push is to definitely try to get this personal protection equipment. How are, I mean, you said we're, how, how long can you go with what you have?
So I think we, our current supply will last us, I believe, based on our current use rate, we're good for a couple of weeks. I believe, based on the restock of the supplies we've ordered, we'll be able to continue that on. I'm hopeful if the order we place today comes to fruition, and based on our current burn rates, I think we'll be fine through the projected three months. That number comes out a lot of this lasting three months. I think we'll be able to get there. The question is, does the burn rate change? You know, if we're starting to, the burn rate is what they use, or how quickly are we using the PPE? So we are following the CDC guidelines that allow us to, they're typically, in a normal circumstance, you use it on one patient and throw it away. They're all disposable. The guidance we have now is, if you put an N95 respirator on, and you're able to, it's not frayed, and it's not contaminated, you can clean the inside of it, the part that would be in contact with your face, and reuse it on another, another patient, because you're not contacting the patient with the, with the item. So we're adding the protection of putting a surgical mask over top of that, so that if we have, right, if you put something on your face, you tend to touch it. So if we put that surgical mask over and we're able to touch the surgical mask, we're not contaminating the N95 respirator, the folks, the piece of that, that's the least, in least in supply. We have been able to get surgical masks a little easier than we have N95. So we're doing some things like that to make that last. So I believe if we get these orders we've placed, we should be okay. What happens to the whole peninsula region, we don't know. Part of that coordination that we're doing is to look at who has what supplies, and we may have to shift those around as times change. Or today, we're the highest number of cases in the peninsula. If that moves, we may need to help them shift resources as well.
So what is that doing to your budget with an increase in having to, as I would imagine, this isn't something that you typically order on this frequent of a basis?
Sure. So based on the guidance we've had from FMS and from Mr. Stevens, many of our other purchases have been put on hold for now. So I believe that the current supplies we've bought, we're still operating within our budget. We may be over on medical supplies, but we are operating within our, within our budget. Certainly, there are unexpected purchases. We usually buy, we keep about 195s on hand, maybe 150, because we use them so infrequently. We started, I think I told you last week, but we started in about mid-January trying to get in line to start getting supplies. And we're still projected to be next week before we actually receive our shipment of those. So it's been very difficult to get.
Thank you.
Can you all hear me? I'd like to ask Veronica a quick question.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ryan, who do you order these PPEs from? Do you order them from the state?
So it's a variety of things. We've gone through our normal medical supply chains that we buy EMS supplies all throughout the year from. We've reached out to some others. We've talked to other localities, and someone they've had success with, then we call. We've gone to Amazon, we've gone to walmart.com. We have put a request in from the state so far that hasn't been filled, because I think the state is catching those requests from all over the Commonwealth, and they're trying to fill those and prioritize. Also, hospital systems are in the same, same situation where we're requesting supplies. So so far, we've had the best luck with just searching the internet daily, maybe a couple times a day, trying to find out, an item was out of stock on Amazon, but now... So so far, we've had the best luck with just searching the internet daily, maybe a couple of times a day, trying to find out, an item was out of stock on Amazon, but now it was available, so we were able to order a case of them. So it's really been a variety of ways we've been getting those.
All right, thank you. I, because I was on a town hall with Congressman Whitman, I've been in constant communication with him, and I've shared these requests by you all from James City County. And I do know that currently the governor's office had referred the congressman's office to the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page and we're all, I guess everybody is just kind of shooting from the hip right now, trying to get what we can get. But if I can be of any help at all, please don't hesitate to let me know. I'm at home, so I have time to sit on the internet, I'll be happy to help out.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Chief, one thing, it's connected to the virus, and it'll also probably tie into the police and our communication and our television, is that normally we have the children out during the summertime and three-month period, and they're back to school. This is going to be a longer period of time, and I see that it's going to probably, and the chief can probably tell us, it's probably going to put more stress on parents and relationships and whatever the parent connection is, and with the children and all that, and just wondering if there's maybe something, I'm talking to everybody, maybe there's something we can put out on our program in order to say, hey, that, you know, there's extra stress on the citizens that they're trying to figure out, okay. Normally I have the children in the summertime, and love to have them in the summertime, and they're at school while I'm working, and I've got it all worked out, and now all of a sudden I don't have it worked out, and I've got to work, and I've got to, and I'm sure it's got to put stress on the family as a whole in figuring out that, and of course, maybe some other items add into the scenario that can really make our environment a little uneasy for the family, trying to figure this all out and the stress that they have. Is there anything that we're doing as a, as a group, and I'm talking to everybody, that we're doing in order to put something out in our programs to say, hey, these are the things that might ease tensions, and might relax the family, and might, and just some small things that, and, and, Rebecca, maybe you'll be catching me on that one, and, and so I'm probably, but I know it ties in with all of us community as a whole, and all the things that each one of y'all are doing. And so just, just trying to figure out if there's anything else that, you know, the county can assist on relieving stress from families and, and the situations that, because all of them have it, even, even the board members trying to figure out, what are we going to do next? What's coming up? What are we here now? What are we, and there's so much information that we're receiving now that we never received when we were growing up. If you missed the six o'clock news, that was it. Now it's 24/7. So you're getting a lot of information, a lot of things coming at you very quickly, and, and just thinking of maybe a possible way that, that we can use our communications to our citizens on how we can, you know, help them prepare for any incidents or, you know, they're out in the woods now, ticks, chicks, snakes, they're all coming out, and kids are normally, the children are normally in school, and they're ready for it in the summer, but they're not ready for it now, and just kind of have educational type programs out there, because that may be the other shoe of this that may be affecting the general public, that we're so concentrated on the virus that, you know, which is important, and we should be, but there's the other component of the family too that we need to watch as well.
We're now certainly defer to the other folks to talk maybe a little more about how that works within police and social services and Latar for messaging. I, I think that's certainly a concern. You know, a lot of times, if we relate this to a hurricane, we're very focused on the preparation and the response to a hurricane, and oftentimes the recovery is something we think about later. And we've really tried to focus a lot of our planning efforts to think about that recovery piece earlier, and this is no different. So we're going to be very focused on getting PPE and getting hospital ventilators and helping hospital systems and all the social distancing, all the things we need to do upfront, but then the things we need to make sure we're capturing is mental health, and that's for folks in our community that normally seek mental health services, that's important to make sure we sustain that as well. And then employees, citizens out in the public, for many people, their whole world has changed, especially just working out daycare, and now with schools being canceled for the year, what, what do we do with those folks? And I know some of the daycares, the folks, the ones that my kids attend have done things to help, if you're a healthcare worker, first responder, they're remaining open as long as they can, keeping less than 10 students and those kind of things to help capture that. But there's another whole mental health component that's very important, and maybe longer lasting than, than what we see the initial medical effects of, of the coronavirus.
Definitely, and those are the ones we want to make sure we catch as well in this process, so we don't leave any, you know, any of our citizens without a, some type of safety net to help them through this process.
For something, I know we've communicated just with the fire department staff, and there's such an information overload, to your point, that you can't go on the social media or TV or anything that you're not being flooded with information, and it's almost all COVID-related. So we've been trying to do some things to say, hey, don't forget, there's these other things the fire department has been working on, and there's some policy updates, and there's training we were going to do, and there's all these things, don't, don't forget about these other things that are also important to sustain the fire department, maybe helps just for a little bit, take their mind off of everything coronavirus-related.
I think that would help with our messaging as far as, you know, our frontline people and explaining, you know, not only are we concerned about this, but there are so many other staff members behind us that are working on these other items, and, and we may be laser-focused on this virus, but then the rest of our group is working on all the other components in life that go along with the fear and the worry and anxiety of this, of this virus, and how we're affecting family members with, with not only health issues, but mental issues, or just a family that's scared, that is, what am I going to do? I'm out of work, my wife's out of work, we have the kids at home, how do we deal with this? What do we got, you know? And there's a lot of that, and I think the churches could help us as well, the different denominations that fit within what group. And I think it's a prime opportunity for us as, as leaders to get out in front of that and, and go, let's look at the human component, you know, on the other side of it as well, and, and see what we can do. And, and I think it's, you know, it's a prime opportunity for us to, you know, not only take the medical side of it, you know, which is the, the most important right now, but then the other side that's coming, the more stress it gets on people, the longer people are off and all that, that stress is just going to build up, and start now we're trying to help that out.
Well, thank you.
I only have one, one comment, and this is not something that I necessarily have a question, I mean, an answer expected, although you may have better information than we've heard. But I've, I've heard from folks about if you are one of those folks who's identified as positive, and I don't know whether it's, I think this is one where people were hospitalized, that once their treatment was through and they were quote "recovered," that they weren't listed as recovered until they had passed two tests at least 24 hours apart. So that's, there is a, obviously a method whereby you can determine if someone who has had the disease has, has truly recovered and is, except, you know, we're to a point where they can go back in, out into the, the public without having a chance of infecting other people. The difficulty is that we have a lot of people who are test positive and wind up going home. And the way I understand it is that at the end of 14 days, I guess they're considered cured, because there's no provision for testing them to determine whether they have recovered sufficiently. And it's potential that they could be back out there continuing to reinfect the community. As, as there been any discussion at all in your, your group about how we deal with the identifying what is recovery and when people should be allowed to be, you know, out of quarantine and back out there? That's, because I've, I've heard cases of where someone recovered and didn't test positive for, you know, like 30 days.
So that's some of the questions we've asked, is how do we know when someone is, is back and recovered? And again, for part of that success story that we want to let people know, the information I have read also said two positive, two negative tests, back to back, or I guess 24 hours apart to confirm that, at least was the guidance I read. We'll take that as another one, as questions for Department of Health today or tomorrow to find out, are we for sure positive cases receiving those two tests later? And if so...
And, you know, I think a lot of it is driven by the availability of the tests, obviously.
Sure.
But that's, this question was something I posed by email to Dr. Julian. But I think it's something that I just wanted to mention again, to have you guys keep in mind for your planning processes as we, as we go forward and hopefully start seeing people recover from this. Any other questions? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Who's, who's up next?
Chairman, Chief Ronheimer.
Okay. Chief Ronheimer, thank you.
Afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the boards. Pleasure to be here. Police department, we are still operating pretty much at full staff. We do have about six officers, employees who are in a self-quarantine status. We have not had any positive tests that I'm aware of. Focusing our efforts, especially on the patrol function and investigations, obviously our school resource officers aren't in school, our community service officers aren't doing the community events and things like that we typically do. So that is really where we're focusing our efforts. It's certainly challenging times, but we're staying very flexible and agile and able to change and adapt as situation changes, because it's changing constantly. You know, we developed a staffing plan, and before we even implemented it, we had to change it and develop a different one. So things are just changing, and we're, we're able to deal with those changes right now. We have the manpower, and we have the resources to, to deal with those changes currently. I would stress again to all of our citizens, no crime, be good. I know being quarantined and being isolated and being stuck at the house with family is sometimes trying time. Anecdotally, I'd say today I did seem to hear a few more domestics than normal on the radio, but overall, our, our calls for service haven't really been increasing very much, which is what we like to see. I do anticipate that changing, though, as things continue. A couple of the questions that you all asked that I'll, I'll try to address here, too. One dealt with how we're handling the issue with gatherings of people over 10, and we have had one instance already. It was a park in a private community where we had one of our community service officers, I don't know if they've done it yet, but they were reaching out to the management there and to talk to them about that. I do expect citizens to call that in when they see it. I want them to call that in if they see it. We've given very specific guidance to our patrol officers for when we do get those types of calls, or if they do see that type of situation in the community, to address it, try to get that voluntary compliance, which we almost always get. Rarely do people say, I'm not doing it. I'm, I'm not going to listen to you. In our community, people are very respectful and they listen to what we say. If it gets to a point where we have to take enforcement action, so we go to an event that's violating the governor's order, we would go there, we would tell them, you need to separate. If they fail to comply, the officer's directive is to notify a supervisor, have a supervisor come on scene, again, use our verbal communication skills and try to gain that, that voluntary compliance. If we don't, then we would take enforcement action. That enforcement action then would most likely be the issuance of summons with a court date sometime in the future. Hopefully that would then resolve the problem. I don't anticipate ever getting to that point, but if it were, would get to that point, that's what we would do. If for some reason people then still failed to comply, then they would reach out to myself or another division commander to make a decision on what we would do next. Certainly a lot of options there. Obviously, we do not want to take anybody to jail for this. That is not our goal. We're certainly asking for compliance, and our citizens have been fabulous. They're heeding the warnings, and I ask everyone to please, please, please follow the orders that are given out from the state locally, and the health department, everybody, follow those directives, because we're all in this together. The other issue that came up, well, I already mentioned that increase in calls, domestic violence and those types of calls, and the governor even alluded to it yesterday in his press conference, and that happens, that happens regularly. Anytime we have a snowstorm and people are stuck in the house for three, four days, we start to see increases in those types of calls, not just domestic, disorderly types of calls and things like that. So we anticipate that, that happening, just asking people to stay calm, be patient, and get some time to yourself. You know, you may be stuck in the house with your entire family, but I'm sure you have a room that you could go in and sit and relax and just get some private time, or take a walk. There's ways you can still get that time that everybody needs, kind of to be by themselves. So please take advantage of those opportunities when they can. That's really all I have to talk about. I'm sure you all have some questions, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Going back to Supervisor Hippel's comments that he made somewhat similar, I, I'm worried about the amount of time that these kids are going to be out of school. I was wondering if your community police are maybe working with school resource officers. I just kind of feel like the more time you have, and, and now you've been cooped up, and you're going to be cooped up till at least April 23rd, and then you've got the whole summer. And I know sometimes in my neighborhood, there's a push and a pull between teenagers being teenagers and people forgetting they were teenagers. So is there a way to get out in front of that and, you know, some, some positivity messaging that, that we can get out and, and maybe work with, with neighborhoods and with teenagers to try to increase some activity once we're allowed to do so, so that we'll have positive activity as opposed to maybe what some perceive as negative activity?
Sure. And we absolutely, we can, we can look at that, coming out with some sort of message about that. We do have, you know, today, there was a call involving a juvenile and our school resource officer who knew the subject responded and dealt with it. So we have those options and those abilities. Our community service officers, while they're out now patrolling, they're certainly touching base with all those communities and looking at any issues that are coming up. It is a challenge, you know, we can't have groups, we can't gather, so trying to come up with events or things that we can do, we can, we'll certainly look at that and see if we can come up with some sort of message, maybe working just with very small groups just more frequently, as we have the, the people to do that.
Just have a quick question about, again, when you're dealing with incidents that may occur, routinely, obviously your officers are coming in contact with folks who maybe have been involved in an accident or committed a crime or whatever. Are any special efforts for distancing that you've had to follow as a result of the situation, chief?
For us as police officers, we're always trained and taught to maintain a distance from people. So that's kind of in our nature anytime we deal with anyone. So we're, we always maintain that six feet in our interactions with people. We've certainly put guidance out to folks as far as PPE gear and dispatch now is asking those questions, and we're asking the officers to ask those questions, you know, when you respond to places. Trying not to go hands-on unless we absolutely have to, knowing that there will be times that we have to. But we've kind of always operated that way. So really, for us, it's not that big of a difference maintaining that distance, because that's our safe zone. We don't allow people that close to us typically on calls.
Thanks, thanks for everything you're doing.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Who, do you have any comments?
No, I'm good right now, thank you. But thank you for everything you're doing for the community. Much appreciated.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir. Okay, sure.
Rebecca. Welcome to the social service side for a minute.
So we've been working on a lot of things. As you mentioned before, you know, people are getting concerned about their hours getting cut and, you know, putting food on the table and providing for other families, and so that's one bucket we're, we're working through. We have seen an increase in people applying for benefits, which we encourage, you know, certainly people's qualifications for those have changed. So we have seen a fairly significant increase in people applying for SNAP and other, you know, Medicaid, other programs that they now may qualify for. So that is all online. We have all of our benefit staff actively teleworking and being able to process those just as if they were in the office. So that is still happening on a regular basis. And so we encourage folks, we have that information on our website and on the messaging that's happening in the county, is for, you know, to go to the website and, and apply for that. So we want to encourage that. Also, unemployment is available, and so we are coming up with resource information for our staff to have, for people, you know, if they're calling, needing assistance with, you know, paying for things that we can drive them in the direction that they can get assistance from somewhere else, or, you know, last resort, we can help people on an individual basis. So we're working through that as far as people's financial needs. As far as communicating or coordinating with other resources, there are a ton of resources out there, like there always are. I mean, this is such a resource-rich community, and this has really just shown how everybody pulls together and, and says, you know, how can we help? And I know we talked about that last time, you know, sometimes service is staying home and taking care of your family and your community, but there are definitely organizations that are actively working. So those organizations... So those organizations that are actively working are working together. So we have a listserv of providers that is sharing information constantly, and then we have a weekly call where we're talking together about things that are coming up and who needs supplies and who needs people to help distribute and all of those coordinations. So it's really just real-time happening and it's going, I think, as well as it could. Certainly, we're all learning as we go along, but I think the communication is happening and that's the first step to coordinate all of the resources. So we've been in touch with the schools, you know, they're doing their grab-and-go meals. We're going to get together information to send out to them in some of those meals. And so I think right now, you know, certainly as this goes on, things are going to ramp up and people who may not have had a need last week may have a need in a couple of weeks. So we know this is continuing, this is a marathon, so we're going to keep going on that and working together. As far as donations, I know people have said, you know, "Can I donate? Is it safe to donate?" And the answer is yes, everybody's taking precautions for that. So I know I have provided some information on how to do that. There's a couple of organizations, Williamsburg House of Mercy and Grove Christian Outreach Center are kind of coordinating and sharing the donations that they receive and doing it in a sanitary way. The Food Bank is still operating and they're coordinating. So again, all of these resources are working together. We are working hard to ensure we don't have any individuals experiencing homelessness that are out on the street, so we're trying to make sure those folks are in hotels, and so that's another thing that we're working on. Transportation on a case-by-case basis, if people need either a delivery or they need to get somewhere, WADA is still doing what they can to help get folks get places. So we're doing that on a case-by-case basis if people need some kind of delivery of things. Let's see. Childcare, that is certainly something I know we've talked about, and that has been a directive, you know, that came down with the governor ordering the schools to be closed now. What can folks do with childcare? So I was on a coordinated call this morning and we've been actively working on sharing resources. There are some facilities that are remaining open. We're hearing about those, a lot of them staying open. So we're working on how do we share that information with those who need it, because if you are able to stay home with your kids, please do. If you are not, because you have to work and you're an essential employee of a facility or have to work right now, where can your children go that they're safe? And so we do have some of that information. There are some websites that are asking for that information to be compiled. So I don't want to distribute anything right now, but I think there's going to be some information forthcoming in the next couple of days about where people can go to have their kids be safe. So I think as that goes on, certainly getting creative, and the folks who may be, you know, okay this week to be a little cooped up in a couple of weeks, where can they go? So I think, again, this is all happening, this is all changing every day, so we're just trying to keep up and communicate and coordinate, and those are things we do on a regular basis, but it's just a little bit on steroids right now.
Yeah, everything's on, there are lots of issues out there. You know, it does seem to me that there are a couple of real challenges in this, and one is that there are so many resources out there, but many of the people who may be in the greatest need of those resources have the least ability to access them. In other words, they don't have internet access, they don't necessarily understand the process that would be involved in making certain kinds of applications, they don't have the documentation that might be necessary in order to qualify for things. Is there a way that we're regionally coordinating some efforts to help folks who are in that kind of situation?
Well, I guess, you know, I feel like we, there's several different ways that you can get the information and that's still ongoing. Certainly, the community providers are very low barrier, so, you know, you don't need an application, you can just show up at the hours and get the information. Or again, you know, if people need transportation or they need delivery, those are things that we need to coordinate as they come up. As far as our benefits process, you know, people can apply online, but they can also call over the phone. And so that information is on our website. We are getting guidance daily, twice, three times a day, from the Department of Social Services about ways to, what we call not take negative action on things. You know, if people haven't gotten their verifications in within 30 days, you know, not to take negative action until we've taken a couple of additional steps. So we're not cutting off people's benefits. We're giving people a little bit of leeway on that. You know, we do have to have some staff in the office to receive some verifications and make sure that we're processing things. So we're trying to be as low barrier as we can. So that's really how I can speak to that.
I guess I just, you know, wonder about people who, for instance, you know, the telephone number's on the website, but if you can't get to the website, you don't know the telephone number, is kind of thing that may sometimes be a barrier. And again, I don't assume that that's something that, you know, is a failure on your part, just kind of a challenge that is a particular issue to deal with.
Well, I do think Latar may speak to some of that because I think there are some efforts to have some printed materials and some things that are, again, trying to hit all of the special populations and all of the people who, again, may not be internet savvy or able to get on there. But I think the more we communicate to our partners who may, you know, see some clients and can share that information, you know, if you have a homebound senior who doesn't have the internet, trying to get that information to the provider who is checking and calling on them, because I think that is certainly still happening on a daily basis. So we want to make sure that nobody is left without knowledge of anything that's happening. And I think to the earlier point...
Rebecca?
Yes, Ms. Sadler?
I'm sorry. I was just curious if the WADA buses are carrying information, you know, to handout that people can take that might have phone numbers that people can call to that point.
I don't believe so, but that is a great idea and certainly something we can look into.
And one other...
Thank you.
That is a great suggestion, Sue. And one other thing that I think is a concern is seniors who may be experiencing social isolation. You know, I almost wonder if there's an opportunity for volunteer activity to be a telephone voice to folks, sort of like, you know, a call from Santa Claus that we see at Christmas season, but where somebody who is, you know, seriously concerned about what this means and they don't necessarily have the support around them to reassure them that, you know, things will get better or to direct them to assistance of one kind or another. Is there any possibility that we might think about ways in which some of the many groups that are offering to volunteer could provide that kind of assistance if we know of people that are, you know, maybe have been getting Meals on Wheels or other folks who we know are facing that kind of social isolation?
I think the information or the effort goes to who is not already connected with somebody. I think the seniors who are connected with a provider, whether it's Meals on Wheels, Peninsula Agency on Aging, Faith in Action, our Connect program, business is still going on as usual. So they are still more than likely receiving a call. You know, we set up wound care for somebody just yesterday. I mean, things are still happening for individuals because they still have ongoing needs, even though this is happening. So to your point, you know, I think that's where neighborhoods and churches and other faith-based organizations need to say who is within their sphere that they can contact and reach out. And so, you know, if individuals are at home, not working like usual, then can they pick up and make some phone calls? And I think that's some of the information that we need to share as far as how to organize that, you know, how to get different teams.
Right. I think that's the real tier. Yeah, because I think there are lots of volunteers out there and lots of organizations that would be happy to pick up on something, they're looking for something to do, but they're really not quite sure how to carry that out.
Yes, and I did, you know, I did provide some of that information to Ms. Larson and Ms. Sadler by request, and so if they found that helpful, that is certainly something that we can get disseminated out. You know, I do have a pastor colleague who is sharing that information with all of the churches in his network, too. So it's a consistent message of how to do this approach in a structured way, which I think is a good thing. And to the earlier point about the coping skills and lessening the impact of trauma, that is definitely something that we are working on. I know we're doing a little bit of messaging about coping skills. I have a huge stack of resources that I'm going to be sending out through. We have a trauma-informed community network that has been gearing up here for about a year now, and so I'm going to be sending it out to all the people on that diverse network to share with their diverse network. And so we certainly need to make sure that people who normally wouldn't be traumatized by situations, this is going to cause an extra layer of trauma and there's going to be additional recovery period for that. So coincidentally, the first week of May is going to be Resilience Week in Virginia, and that was something that people were going to hear about, and so it's certainly going to be a good time because hopefully by the first week of May, people will be a little healthier and we can come out the other end and celebrate the resilience as a community that we have gotten through with all of this. So more to come on that.
So I have a question regarding the childcare when I saw the governor's press conference yesterday. Now, when essential, so grocery stores have been determined retail, so you would be working with their workers as well, and how does payment work? Are the people still expected to pay? If they're determined to be an essential worker, they still pay for their childcare or are they looking to the localities to pick up?
So a couple of different ways. One of the reasons that we haven't shared information yet is that I think each provider is different in their approach. Some of them may be making some changes, but that's on their business office to make that decision. Some providers take childcare subsidies, some do not. That is distributed through the Department of Social Services. So our childcare subsidy worker is standing by, ready to process applications. We're getting guidance about how to process those faster so that people who do now maybe qualify for assistance or who hadn't asked in the past can get that assistance financially with that. So there's, again, real-time guidance and things changing for that. But I think, you know, people, as somebody told me earlier, may have to smile and dial. People may still have to make some calls and ask, you know, "This is my particular situation." So I just, you know, heard that YMCA is offering healthcare for essential healthcare workers, so some may be targeting different populations. So we, as a community, need to work on advocating for populations that may not, like retail workers or things like that. So Smart Beginnings up in Virginia Peninsula is trying to coordinate, so I've been in communication with them. I mean, this all came down yesterday, so there's been a lot of work, I think, that has happened really quickly because everybody is realizing, you know, childcare is such a huge thing that we need to work through, so.
And I guess my last question or question comment would be, I am desperately worried about the amount of children that may be left at home at some point. I think, you know, I don't know that April 23rd is realistic to expect that we're going to poof, be back at normal, but I do think there's going to be pressure on people to get back to work.
Absolutely.
And there is going to, there may not be childcare that's available, they may not be able to afford it, and I think we're going to see numbers of children left at home with little to no supervision. And how, what is our role in that, if any at all? And are you prepared for the neighbor that calls to say, "Hey, I think..." You know, and that's not accusatory to, I think parents, 99.9% do the best they can do. And the best they can do, they may think is, "I've got to go to work in order to feed these kids, so I've got to, I'm going to have to take a chance and leave them here." What can we do through that crisis? And then how do you address with the, if you get a call from a neighbor that says, "I don't think these kids should be here alone"?
Well, I will say we get those calls every day. That is not, that's not really related just to this virus. I mean, that does happen, and I think to your point, people do the best they can. And so they may have an 11-year-old that they feel is perfectly capable and may be perfectly capable, knowing who to call, what to do in an emergency. I mean, there's certainly steps that people have to go through or kids have to go through so that they know. But if you're caring for younger siblings or you're certainly, please don't leave your child alone overnight under 18 because that, you know, there's just safety concerns. So I think, you know, again, we get those calls, we still have staff doing home visits, checking on people, but our first, our first thing that we do is we help you solve the problem. You know, we're going to go in and say, "What led you to think that this was a safe decision? And what are some things that we can do that are now safe?" You know, we certainly can't promote this, but there are people posting in various groups on Facebook, "I'm a college student, you know, home now for whoever, however long, I'm able to do this for free," or tutoring or things like that. So I think as a community, if your neighbor, you know, calls and says, "This person is leaving their kids alone, can that neighbor please help problem solve?" You know, "Can that neighbor please say, 'Well, I heard, you know, so-and-so down the street or so-and-so in this neighborhood is offering free childcare.'" So I think, again, I would like to see us help each other out. You know, we're certainly not in the business of creating additional barriers. We really want to have people help each other and we're here to help problem solve. So again, we get those calls all the time, so we're trained on that. But I think in this situation, there are less resources available, but we still need to work through, how can you, how can you have somebody safely caring for your child? So we're going to do the best we can to work with you on that.
And I would hope the schools would help push something out, too. I don't know what they're, since I don't have school-aged children any longer, I'm no longer on the robo-calls, so hopefully, you know, they could help.
I just got one a few minutes ago, so there certainly are.
Okay.
They're calling all the time.
Pushing out, if you need help with, you know, contact James City County, City of Williamsburg, social service, you know, reach out before you make a decision.
Yes, yes.
That could be life-altering.
And just before I came here, actually, to communicate with somebody in the school division about how we're sharing communication and how we're ensuring that, you know, they have a website, and so what are they sharing and then what are we sharing? So we're cross-sharing and we're making sure that, you know, if you're just going to the school website or you're getting information from the school, like a robo-call, what can we share of each other's situations? And so I know that they're actively looking at what they can do so that kids aren't home alone, bored who aren't supposed to be, because to your earlier point, that can cause, you know, idle hands kind of situation.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm getting a lot of robo-calls from the schools.
Okay.
They're happening all the time.
They're sending a lot out, even with the instructions, as far as keeping up with math and history and...
And technology needs.
There's a ton.
And are you doing it? Are you keeping up with math and history?
So far, I can add two and two.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear it.
How are we doing as far as the, any food issues? We're keeping up with everything? Is there a need for that? Because thinking about it, and I was listening as you talked, and I was thinking about what needs we have and what we have extra in the community. And I know our, and I don't know if it could work out, but I know our food trucks are trying to search for ways to, you know, sell their products and all that. And I didn't know if that was something that, okay, if you come to work with us for a week or two weeks or whatever, you know, you can serve a hot meal, X amount to this group of people that need that service. And that may be a way for the food trucks to, you know, keep their business open and give them an avenue to, you know, do that. And maybe they meet at one spot and, you know, X amount of people meet there.
Excessively distanced apart.
Right, yeah, as long as everybody's distancing themselves and, but it may be an avenue to think about as we go. I don't know if it would work or if it wouldn't work or if the food trucks weren't even, you know, consider that, but it may be another avenue if we become short of something to, you know, partner with some of our businesses and say, "Okay, you can, you know, we have a need in this area."
Right.
But, and then we space people out, you can only be within this distance. Okay, you can go up next, okay? And then, and then have a stifen for the food truck, just prepare X amount of meals.
Yeah, I think that, again, the whole thing that we need to work on is communicating and who's doing what when.
Right.
And so, you know, the listserv that we have that is providers are trying to not duplicate but coordinate. And so if you do, you know, want to serve or feel the need to serve, you know, what is the day that nobody else is serving or what is a timeframe or an area? And so I know there's some folks who are working on a map of different places that are distributing at different times, and so I think that's going to be really helpful when we can get that online to say, you know, "Here are the times and here are the places" so that it is just, because we do have a very long, very long county, and so making sure that, you know, everybody from Stonehouse to Grove is getting access to it if they have transportation issues. So that's just continual work in progress. But I have seen, you know, at least one food truck set up or distribute things, so I think people are doing that when they can, but I think just being mindful of the fact that we're only just beginning.
Right.
And so... And so if you could hold on to some things or come online later, you know, we're going to need you in a few weeks.
Yeah, and this may not be something today, maybe something two weeks or a month down the road. But a possibility to open up another avenue to, you know, supply needs for the citizens.
Well, we will definitely continue to work on our coordination and communication so people can know what's happening when.
Do you have any questions?
No, thank you. I'm good.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ruth.
I'll ask Latara Rouse to come up and talk about communications and how it's evolving and see what kind of suggestions or questions you might have of her.
Good afternoon. So as far as communications, we are continuing to push out information through a daily news release at 5:00 PM each, each day. We're also sharing information that we're getting, such as the governor's, governor's order yesterday. That has gone online. We've reached the point now where we have such a volume of information that we've been putting out each day. We've actually had to take some time and actually restructure the way we're putting out information. And so if you go to our COVID page now on the county's website, you'll see that it's been redesigned because we just wanted to, we just needed to restructure some things so they're a little bit easier for, and accessible for people. One of the things that you will find on there is an FAQ tile that goes to a page that includes FAQs about the governor's executive order, which goes into effect tonight at midnight, which of course, as several folks have alluded to, is calling for the shutdown of essential, non-essential businesses and K through 12 schools. So there are lots of questions about exactly what that means and how that's going to impact various organizations. And so the FAQs are a good place to start. They're pretty, pretty thorough and it will answer a lot of those common questions. We're also going to be posting our own FAQs, folks, questions that are coming into the county as well as information about, the main thing we've been doing is information about how to do services with the county remotely. So initially, in this COVID response, we have been focusing on, A, letting folks know about operational changes, so closures and how to reach county services, essential county services. I think what we're going to be doing in the next few weeks, what you'll be seeing coming up, is a pivot now, now that we've got that information out and, and, and now that we as an organization have sort of set up our remote services. So folks are now set up, they've got their telework arrangements set up. And so now we've, I think we are sort of reaching a place where we're hitting our stride there. The next thing that we want to sort of pivot to is a couple of things. One is to your point, Mr. Hippel, about audiences that we, or I think it might have been Mr. McGlinnan or maybe both of you mentioned, folks that we might be leaving out. And so this has been an unprecedented situation. So we've had to rely really heavily on technology. So we are putting out constantly information on our social media, which we do normally. But of course, now it's been so focused on our response to this, this crisis. So we've got our information on our social media. We've got information on our, on our website as usual. But we're so, and I think Ms. Sandler might have, or somebody pointed out that the phone number's on the website, but if you can't get to the website, what do you do? So we, normally the response to that would be that we put out information in print. And where do you put out information in print? To places that have high traffic. Well, those places don't exist right now. And so that presents yet another challenge for us. So where we would normally, you know, put flyers or something at the recreation center, at any place that has, you know, lots and lots of people going by or we'd have special events where we could disseminate information, that option is not available to us anymore. So we are currently in the process of, it's requiring a lot of cross-coordination across departments to try to disseminate citizens' guides and those FAQ sheets and other printed information to various distribution points throughout the county. So we're working on that this week. We've got the plan in place. Everyone sort of has their assignments. And hopefully we'll have that up by next week at various locations throughout the county. We are going to try to set up those little distribution boxes, kind of like you get the little newspapers. So some of those in certain places through the county where people can pick up a citizen's guide and a copy of, of FAQs related, specifically related to COVID. And that will help people who, again, it's not a perfect solution, but it's a way for us to do a low-contact distribution of printed materials to those that don't have internet access. And hopefully that'll help us a little bit. We do still have the hotline in place at 757-564-2140 where people can call in to get information and we are updating that daily as well. So the other thing that we are going to be doing as well, in addition to the distribution of printed materials, is targeting our messaging to, or changing our messaging for non-essential services. Again, the beginning of this response, the big messaging we were putting out was about operational changes and how you can reach counties, essential county services. Well, as many folks have mentioned this evening, we are also reaching a point where people have been cooped up in the house for quite some time. There are some concerns about, you know, mental health and that sort of thing. So we do want to make sure there's lots of services that the county provides that can help with that. So for example, I know in our news releases, we've been mentioning that the, the library system has put 9,000 additional titles on, available digitally. And they've also created a new library card that is sort of a temporary library card so you can get digital access to that information. And I believe they have about 3,000 audio type, audio titles as well. So those sorts of things, as well as maybe, we've talked about possibly fitness videos and maybe some activities that I'm going to be working with our Parks and Recreation staff to see if they can maybe suggest some activities that people can do at home with your family. Those kinds of, they're not the same as our essential services. Of course, you need to know that 911 is still going to be there when you need it. But you also might need to know what you can do with your kids if you all have been in the house for three weeks now and kids are driving each other crazy. So we're going to try to put out that messaging as well. And finally, I wanted to mention that we are also working on messaging for target audiences. We have various groups of people in addition to folks that don't have access to the internet. There are other groups of people that we want to make sure that we're reaching with our messaging that might have special questions. Some of those include faith-based organizations. We have lots of Spanish-speaking population. We also have businesses. Our economic development office has been putting together a list of business resources, which is available on their website, yes, jamescitycountyva.com. So if you go there, there's a, there's a section that's got all that information compiled for businesses. And of course, that information is evolving every day. But all of that is, and also non-affiliated volunteers. So those are the groups that we're trying to target our message to now that we're sort of pivoting from our initial sort of emergency reaction and changes in operation. So you'll be seeing some of that information coming out soon. And of course, all of this is, as I always say, subject to change at any moment. And we are just going to do our best to keep getting that information out to the public. Any questions for me?
Latara, if I might ask or just comment, you're talking about high-traffic volume areas. I don't know if it's possible or not, but you know, there's a lot of people going to the grocery stores right now. In the dollar stores, Dollar General, that sort of thing. I don't know if we can post something there with flyers for people with the phone numbers in those retail areas, essential areas that would give people access to their phone numbers. That was just a thought.
That's a great suggestion. Thank you very much.
I want to add the liquor store to that too. It's terrible to say, bud.
Shortened hours now though.
I was going to say you could punch stuff in the toilet paper aisle and I'm sure.
Yeah, right. And I, I do want to, just want to say that both the, the social service employees, the staff in, in social services and the communication staff are just doing tremendous jobs on the, on the other side of this whole crisis about helping to reassure folks and, and to provide them with alternatives. So thank you very much for all of that. I do think that as, as we continue to go along with this, it is going to be important to keep folks informed of, of opportunities and what's going on. And I'm glad to see the proactive involvement in, in that regard. Just recognizing that there are lots of challenges to it. But I've been trying to share as much as I can the information that has been posted on the website and trying to, to let people know about all the services that social services has been working with to help people know about where they can turn for some assistance. I also do want to just say that this is a, a time when it would do us some good, I think, to be trying to come up with some ideas about how we rationalize what we're doing. And by that, what I mean is to, I, I sort of feel in the last couple of days, recognizing that we're in very early stages of, of an unprecedented situation, that we are making one-off decisions. And we need some kind of guiding principles to, to help with that. And then to be able to communicate those principles clearly to the community. And I guess what I'm suggesting here is that, you know, we're learning almost minute by minute of people and organizations and businesses that are affected in different ways by this whole crisis. And we sort of get the information about, here's what somebody says is the problem, but it's not within any broader context. And it makes it really challenging to say, yeah, we really need to think about doing something. And how would we decide that that's a good decision for the community as opposed to doing something else? You know, for instance, we, we've been asked questions about food trucks, just as, as an example. And, you know, on the one hand, you could say, well, should we be flexible in our ordinance? On the other hand, you know, as you look at our ordinance, it really does provide some great opportunities for people who have food trucks to take advantage of the way in which that ordinance is structured and provide a service to, to communities. And maybe thinking about how we can promote what is already available and encouraging people in that business to take advantage of their, the ability to promote the fact that they are available, that they can make deliveries, that they could set up for a short period of time in a neighborhood and deliver pre-ordered foods. That maybe there's a, a location in a, a commercial area that they could establish themselves in and have people come and pick up orders and so forth. But, but I think it's going to require a kind of effort that we ought to be involved in coordinating, but isn't just going to be us. It needs to be Chamber of Commerce. It needs to be Restaurant Association. Needs to be, if there is an organization representing the food truck industry or other kinds of organizations. But we just need to have a, a, a clear sense of what it is we're trying to do. I think we want to have a couple of points, you know, come out immediately. We want to do, to do things that do not work against our effort to promote social distancing. And so anything that works against that goal, we ought to think about very carefully before we would ever say, oh yeah, let's go ahead and do that. And if that's the principle that, that's helping to guide our, our actions, I think it makes it a lot easier for us to figure out, is this the right thing to do or not? But that's really kind of what I'm thinking we need to be starting to focus on. Whether it's in terms of our direct response to people who are physically and medically affected by the crisis, whether it's in terms of maintaining social order in the community, getting people in touch with their resources or communicating the story. I think we as a board and, and our senior staff need to kind of try to figure out those principles that we feel are necessary for us to guide the decisions that we make. Off my soapbox.
So just a couple of things. I, I like very much your idea of the rec center, of the, of the rec, Parks and Rec, coming up with something to try to keep people active. Because I was trying to think of something to do in my neighborhood, like can we log, can we log the amount of miles if you're walking the loop or something? You know, just not only to keep people active, but to also help with, you know, brain drain. Okay, I've got to figure out how many. So there's, it's kind of quiet right now, so hopefully they can come up with some good ideas. I'm counting on them. The other part that I was going to say, and probably both to you and Rebecca, and I'm sure you're both aware already, but I think it does help. Congregation, I mean, I got, I got a call from a church that I haven't been a member of in, in years. I also got a call from my church. So, I mean, they are really digging and reaching out to people. So any information we can get to them, I'm sure they're happy to, you know, yeah, not everybody's going to answer, but a lot of people are. And I know that a retired doctor in, in my neighborhood was telling me that she started reaching out, she, she had a group of retired physicians that are a part of her congregation. They started reaching out to people that they knew were seniors and, and maybe isolated. As a result of their phone calls, five of them ended up going to the hospital to be treated because they were kind of, you know, not paying attention to what they were experiencing as far as symptoms go. So they, they were able to help them get, you know, needed medical care. So there's a lot of roles that, that people can help. And I know this isn't all our responsibility, but I think we, we do have a lot of information that we can help get out in the pipelines. And the more we can do that, the better. And so I do appreciate all your efforts. And I do think it is important to keep pushing that, that we are open and that we want to continue to serve people. So, thank you.
A few things. I, I, I think Supervisor McGlinnan hit on a good thing as far as, you know, maybe a phone tree. That would be a good use for the churches to, you know, and then the other organizations that, you know, because you can be on the phone and say, I'll take 10 people. Over the next two days, I'll call them and just chat with them and, you know, that are locked in and, and can't get out. And it may be a way of, of giving them a little hope of, hey, what's going on? What's happening? And, and, you know, sometimes, you know, especially, I notice when you're in an older group, you just want a conversation. You don't need anything else, just, you know, just a nice conversation. I know with our flyers and all that, this, there's, there's a group of us, I put me in that group of no internet. Not because I don't want it, because I can't get it. And I'm thinking maybe in the, in, in the districts that don't have internet or the areas that don't, maybe we should look at flyers like a, um, um, postcard to go in the mail and catch those people that they're not coming out or they may not come out for two or three weeks, but they may have a need or a want in their two or three weeks before they get out. And if they don't go the right place that we have it, even though we're putting a ton of information out, it's amazing how much information we're putting out. There are still those ones. My wife told me, she saw it somewhere, but it might be something that we can do as far as encouraging the community. There was a group encouraging the community, put up Christmas decorations. If you're home, let's have some fun and see who puts up the best Christmas decor. Easter's right around the corner, you know, decorate for Easter, Fourth of July. You know, maybe make a month, James City County has determined that this month is going to be this type of decoration. And we challenge everyone to put up decorations and send us your photos. And maybe we take that and say, we'll give you a membership to the rec when we open back up. And it might get the community involved in that and give them something else to do. And the kids, hey, we want to decorate for Christmas even though it's not Christmas. And I, and I think that probably as far as messaging, I think one key component we're probably missing is, is this board. Maybe we ought as a board, send out a message to the community, letting them know we're working for them. We care, that our staff is working like crazy, still trying to distance themselves, but still trying to make, connect all the dots, keep everything open. And I think that would be a powerful message to the citizens that gets run, that each board member speaks for a minute or two and, and, and talks to the community as far as, you know, whatever they want to say. And encouragement of, you know, this, this is going to be, we don't know. And encouragement of, you know, this is going to be, we don't know how long this is going to be, but this is going to be over one day, and we're going to be better for it, we're going to be more organized if the next thing that comes about, because there's always things in life that come about. We hope we don't lose any more citizens. We hope our rest of our citizens stay healthy. But we are going to move forward, we are in charge, we're going to make sure that we protect everything you have, and we're here for you. And please let us know and tell us how we can help, or call these numbers. And I think the board could be very powerful in help in what needs to be done, you know, with staff and that sort of thing in order to get a message out that, that just, just tells the community that, hey, you know, we know all these things, we have the fears too. We have family, and we have the county as a whole as a fear. And we're worried about you, but we're, we're leading, we're standing straight, we're standing upright, we're going to get us through this, we're going to figure out ways to heal this community, get it to where it needs to be. We're going to connect you with the right people, we're looking at our finances, we're looking at a year, we're looking at two years from now, how will this affect us? When will this be over? We don't know. But we're going to stand right beside you, and we're going to make sure that you're in the game with us, and we're going to do everything in our power as a board to make sure that we lead this community in a positive direction as we go through this, this trial. That'd be my suggestion. Thank you.
Sue? Sue, are you, do you have any comment?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I would, the only thing I would add was, I thought, food, I wrote down food stores, so that was perfect, everybody was thinking about, where are people going? Food stores, another one would be pharmacies. So those, you know, the places where they, they will be going, I think it's a good opportunity to get stuff out. I did want to ask if the staff in the back has that little video clip I wanted to put up, the slide. I had asked them earlier, and so if they get an opportunity to put that up, I would appreciate it, see if they can.
Do you have any other questions for me?
Yes, ma'am, no, that's, that's it. Thank you.
I just wanted to...
This, okay, it'll, okay, it'll, okay, it'll come up in a second on our board. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to reiterate, just as, even as we're making this pivot towards sharing some of the nonessential services, we will continue the messaging about operations and the continuation of county businesses being available, county business that you can do with us remotely. And so, that will certainly continue. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Coming up. Oh, it's showing on TV? Okay.
It was there.
It was there for a second, huh? Be a quick watcher.
Don't blink.
That's right. Well, anyway, for the board, it was the one I had sent earlier. It was showing the exponential factor. There it is. The power of social distancing, that in 30 days, how one infected person can infect 406, and that the 50 to 75% less exposure has a dramatic effect. And so, I think this is one of the things where we need to constantly keep reinforcing to our citizens that this is what will make the difference in making sure that we can get past that hump that would otherwise overcome our healthcare system. And that's our, our most critical aspect that we're looking at so far. As far as the briefings on the COVID, the only thing I would come back to is, I'll echo exactly what Supervisor Pipola said, the board needs to have a, the opportunity to reach out to as many people. I've made comments and called homeowners associations and people in the neighborhood and everything. I think that's a really good, good way to go. But this is a board effort, this is a group effort. Leadership is always a group effort, it's never an individual. So, I appreciate all, everybody on the board has been doing to make that happen. I think that concludes our, our updates from the staff. I would say that the remaining items that we had, the Workforce Housing Task Force findings recommendations we went and looked at, as well as the closed session, we have decided we will defer that to a later, later date. And I wanted to go into some board requests and directives and see if there was issues that you wanted to talk on. And I would like to sort of set the stage for that, if I can, for a couple of discussions. Number one, I believe the budget is supposed to be released this Friday, is that correct?
Right, we're working towards that. I think we are going to make that, but we will confirm that with you later this week. We are working towards the release of that.
I think one of the things we ought to discuss a little bit is maybe our thoughts for the county administrators and the staff's consideration of how we want to proceed with this process, because obviously it's going to be different this year. The legislature knows that there are going to be differences in revenue projections, we don't know what they are. We're going to have to have some great flexibility in how we go forward with our budgeting process here. So, any comments or ideas that you could give them on that, I think would be helpful. I've talked to Mr. Tinsman about the other boards and commissions. I think to the great, great extent, they don't need to be meeting if they don't have any critical business. The only one I would think that might, we might want to continue having to meet would be the Planning Commission. And so, I'd like to hear your thoughts on, on that. And then finally, for our April meeting, which is a couple, three weeks hence from now, your thoughts about whether we want to continue meeting in this format, or whether we want to try to do that meeting totally virtually. So, I will open it up for comments, but that's my request for input from you on some of those things.
So, let me just start off the board requests and directives then, and I'll respond to a couple of the things that you said. I, I agree that to the, to the extent that we don't have critical decisions to be made, that having other boards and commissions meet doesn't seem necessary to me at this point, probably better not to try to accomplish that. Planning Commission, fine, if, if there are cases that need to move forward at this point, and if there are things that can be deferred there, maybe they should be to some degree. But on the budgetary matter, I'll give some thought to what we might do. Obviously, we don't know what the conditions are going to be. We have heard that there is potential for the national government to provide some funding for states and localities to help with this, with this situation. And we also know that the state does have significant reserves that were budgeted for this year. Obviously, the revenue is expected to come in, we're probably not going to be coming in at the same rate, but we do have the Rainy Day Fund to help us cushion, cushion some of the blow there. And hopefully, funding for local government functions, the vital services like schools and police and emergency services and the like will be, and social services will, will still retain a high priority. In terms of other, other matters, I did have one other item that I wanted to raise under board requests and directives, and I'm trying to think of what it was. Oh, yes, I did want to pass on the fact that over the last couple of several days, I've been out walking quite a bit as a form of exercise. When I was out on the trail by Mayland Farm the other day, had a citizen who was out running with his dog say, thank you so much for providing this facility because it is a real jewel. And I think that this is a great opportunity for people to get some exercise, to get a little fresh air, and just to get away from the constant barrage of cable news and the like, to go out and experience some of these wonderful facilities that we have. You can do it while you're socially distant. I mean, you can, you're not going to be encountering huge crowds of people on these trails. Walking through a park is always a great opportunity. Just taking a stroll down to Gloucester Street even, in the city, is, is good. And it, it's a chance for you to maybe discover a part of the county and a facility that you didn't know existed before. So, I'd encourage people to take advantage of that. That's when we get, again, to the question, I know that we're, we're looking at the issue of county parks, and I, I know some people have said, why are the county parks open? I think the fact that they are open in a way that does not encourage groups, but rather individual or a couple, maybe a couple with children walking together or riding bikes together, is really an asset. I would say that, again, thinking about principles, a principle that basically holds that we want those parks and recreation facilities available to the citizens to the degree that they can be consistent with our concept of social distancing. And that'll help make some of the decisions that we're thinking about as we go forward. So, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. I, I'll start where you leapt off and say that I've been on the trail behind Jamestown High School and then War Hill, the trail out at War Hill, which I was not even had any idea what kind of trail that was. It's a very tough trail, first of all. And people were respecting social distancing and, but there were, there were people out enjoying it, getting exercise. So, we do have beautiful trails here. I think it helps too, not just with your physical health, but your mental health to get out. I do want to go back to, okay, I even wrote myself a note, this is so sad, go back to information. Oh, yes, okay. I want to go back to something you said earlier about information and why decisions are made. And I think that's helpful. I think, you know, I have gotten such blowback from people who do not understand why schools were shut down for the entire year, instead of, why didn't Governor Northam say, we're going to shut down schools till May 1, and then come back April 15 and say, hey, this is traveling more than we thought, so we're going to... And to be honest with you, I, I mean, I could answer it very flippantly and say, well, you'll have to call, contact your school board member. But I, I don't really know the answer to that either. I mean, I do know in, in what this, you know, this virus looks like, going back to what you say, and, you know, your, the chart that you put up. But we're saying in 30 days, we're going to, but yet we're shutting down schools for the rest of the year. So, I, I do think if you're going to put out a decision, it helps to, even to send your local government elected officials information that says, this is why I made a decision to shut down schools the rest of the year, and so that we can forward that out to people. Because I don't think it was made, you know, off the cuff, but help us get more information so we can get more information out. I think that that helps. So, I'll go back to the question, if, if there are boards that, you know, don't need to meet, right now, there's not a pressing need, I, I agree with that. Planning Commission, if they need to meet, should meet. I guess for me, you know, I have, I have mixed emotions about us. I think if we're asking a grocery store clerk to go to her grocery store shift, and we're able to meet, you know, Ms. Hadler is, is, her health is a number one priority, she's been able to contribute by phone. I, you know, that is, that's a different matter. And certainly, if we see, you know, there's, if things tighten up here, then, then we have to look at it. So, I don't know that I necessarily want to make a decision on April 14 today, but that's where I am. I am interested in the, knowing about the federal relief and when we do know, and, and what that's going to look like. Because I, I have asked a question about who is going to be getting, you know, who's going to continue to receive a paycheck through all of this? I mean, there's some real, there is some real financial strain that is, is coming down. That was another large part of the conversation, you know, pushing back some of these deadlines that have been pushed back on the, the state level, for instance, means that 145 million revenue that could come into the state, 40 million of that that goes out to localities, that's going to be pushed back by pushing a deadline. And that's real-time, you know, ramifications. So, I, I hope that at our next meeting, we will discuss, you know, what are we, what are we looking at as far as how, how that might impact our county, how that might impact our schools? I'm interested to know what schools are doing to join our efforts in watching the bottom line here. And so, I, I think as, as much budgetary information as we can have, the better. Because we already, I guess there's already been a $10 million package for this, but we know that's going to grow as, as these, as, as this crisis continues to grow. Not the least of which, what is this, you know, not, not making a commentary on if this type of shutdown is what, there is a shutdown. And so, we know that the revenue we're going to get from our businesses is going to be considerably down, we are going to take a big hit. So, what does that look like? And what can we do to be saving some money? So, I think anything we can try to, to offer, to get in front of is, is very good. I do want to tell you that, that the first thing that the governor started out the call with last night was that, you know, he was talking to elected officials and he asked to pass on to our colleagues as well, to do whatever you can do to stay healthy because you are needed. So, you know, I'm glad to, we're, we're practicing, and Ms. Hadler's doing everything she can do to try to stay healthy. So, it's, so it's very important to the citizens. And then he just reiterated again, this is a health crisis and this is an economic crisis for the Commonwealth of Virginia. So, hopefully, I, I was able to be on this call because of the VACO Board of Directors. The three secretaries that were on the call were willing to do it again next week, and I'm hoping that VACO is going to send out notes from that, and if they do, I will, I will get them to you as soon as I can. I was trying to make notes, but it was fast and furious. So, I did, you were allowed to, to ask questions, but it was kind of, you know, you had to try to jump in there whenever you could get a moment. And so, I had to, I took one, I did express frustration about the flow of information. And Secretary Carey did, you know, I, I wasn't necessarily looking for an answer now because I know they're in the middle of dealing with a lot of different things. But I said, I hope when you do a look back of what happened, I hope you will consider the frustrations that we've been through, especially being a hotspot. And, you know, I don't want, some, something's getting lost in the translation. I, and, and I don't mean this in an unsympathetic way, because I have sympathy, deepest sympathy for anyone that's been ill from this virus. But I don't need to know their name or their address, it might help to know their neighborhood, where they've been, who they've had, you know, where they've had general contact with. I don't want to be getting, you know, an email from people that say, well, you know, I'm on my 14th day, and, and then we had no idea that there was, you know, any type of, of community contact in a very popular spot. So, I had asked Mr. Stevens if he would, if he would please be willing to write up what we've been experiencing, and Secretary Carey would like to see that and would like to get an email. So, I'm, I'm hoping that they're, that they're willing to listen. And frankly, as a parent, HIPAA's, I, I don't understand why if you're paying this, this tuition, you can't get the information. So, I mean, and, but I hadn't, I had no idea that when I was kind of, you know, frustrated by that, that I was going to be looking at a health crisis in my community, that I was going to be unable to warn my community about it. And, you know, I, I have, I have just a lot of, a lot of issues with that. And I think perhaps we, you know, maybe we could have self-isolated a heck of a lot sooner had we been able to have some of this information. So, that's where I am. Thanks for asking.
All right. And I've, I've said it before, on the budget item, I think we need to, and I know the county administrators started a team together to start looking at profits and loss. We definitely have to look into profits and loss direction. What, what we really need is... What we really need is every month, a report that comes in, and this is where we're at, because it's going to change so much. It's going to, this team can put a report together this month, and next month look totally different. But what are we looking at? And what is it going to look like in a couple of months? And this is nothing I think the team's going to be able to put that is dead on it, but it's a forecast. Ladies and gentlemen, this is where we're at. This is the loss we're experiencing right now from the companies that are shut down. Bush Guard and some of the other companies that are shut down. This is the loss to our community. This is how we're planning and looking to make this up. Or we don't have a plan in place of how we're going to make this up. Then it's up to this board to go, "We need to have a plan of how we're going to make this up." Because the last thing I want to do is sit on this board in a year to two years and have to wrestle with a tax increase or anything else because we could have changed things earlier. And I want to make sure that all of us are on the same page and all of us are in a direction of our finances, because I think it's very important not to lose that. The Planning Commission, I think, yeah, they should go ahead and continue to meet. I don't think the other ones need to meet, but the Planning Commission, as they're sending things to us and keeping the doors open, that's an important part of what we do. Meetings here, I think that's something that I have no problem meeting here, and we're distance enough and everything else. And if anybody doesn't, I have no problem with that either. And I'd have to agree that we don't know what it'll be in a month or two months. You know, hopefully, we're going to get better. My hope is we'll get better, and we've seen the worst, but we don't know. So that plan may have to work itself out as we go. But I plan on being here, God's willing, and the creek doesn't rise, right here in a seat, and continuing meetings right here. And I agree with John, you know, we've got great parks and recreational facilities that we can distance ourselves and take the children out and go fishing. Take them out and take them for a walk. Take them for a bike ride. Fly a kite. Do the things we used to do before we used our thumbs to do everything. You know, we might use our whole hand in some of these projects, and that would be a good thing. There's things that you remember doing with your mother and father that, you know, you may do with your children now that you never thought you really do because you've forgotten them. Maybe you take a piece of paper like this and build an airplane and fly it across the yard and see how far one can go. So there's a lot we can do. In our business, there's things, I'll give you some examples. A mortar plant closed down their facility, and we're not going to make any mortar until this thing went away. Well, within a week's time, they find out they've almost sold all their resources in mortar that they had because everybody heard there not going to be any mortar. So we're all scrambling to get mortar. Well, then they decide, "Well, man, we've got to put more mortar out." So they open a plant up, back up, and not only did they open it up with the same shift they had, they've added now a second shift to keep up with the demand. So, you know, it's amazing. We have a stone plant up in Pennsylvania waiting for stone to come down, but they're talking about they may shut down all of Pennsylvania. And everybody's worried about that. We may not be able to get shipments. So it's affecting everybody in different ways. And, you know, one thing I think that we need to be vigilant on this board as we move through this project or through this situation is internet across James City County. This is ridic, this is, if we don't have an example of why we need internet right now with what we've got going on, we've got our heads in the dirt. And it's amazing, and it's easy to not think about it when we have internet. Thank God I don't have internet. I wish I did, but it lets me have that other side of the fence to go, "This wouldn't be important to be able to look up some of these things, to see what's going on and check on this, and see what a news report is other than, you know, what I've got out there right now." I'm blessed to have what I have, but there's a lot of people that we need, we should be, one of our priorities coming out of this should be broadband internet across James City County from one end to the other. And we should really dedicate because what I've said in the past as far as high schools, and y'all have heard me say it, you're probably tired of me saying it, but high schools eventually being on the internet and learning from the internet, and maybe Powhatan goes to high school on this week, Stonehouse goes on the next week, Berkeley goes in the next week, and every, the other four weeks there on internet learning, this is going to change, which will be a good thing. This is going to change how we do things, too. There's a silver lining in everything, and this will change how things are done across the county, across the state, and across the United States. And it may be an eye-opener for us to see and stretch our wings, because we've always done things like our fathers and mothers have done. And now it might be a thing to say, you know, that there is some, there's some good coming out of this. There's a lot of bad things, and I feel so sorry for anybody affected with this. It is not something I would wish on anyone. And this board, I know, is very concerned about all the citizens and how it may affect them. And I hope to God it doesn't affect any more than we've seen at this point. One other note on our HR tack and our transportation and all that, and I know very little about it right now, but we had a surveyor out on one of the roads, and evidently a vehicle went over the guardrail, went down the ravine, and ended up where the surveyor was surveying, ended up killing the surveyor. That's all I know right now, and, you know, and I'll reach out to the family and, you know, I can't say enough on how devastating that's got to be with everything else that's going on. But, you know, we did have a fatality this afternoon. I don't know much about it, but it's a shame that, you know, we've lost a worker out there, you know, helping us build these roads. So my thoughts and prayers are with the family and everyone connected to this individual that we've lost today. All I have to say.
Super, I'm sorry. May I jump back?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I wanted to take a moment to thank staff. I forgot to do that. I have been blowing Adam's phone up, sending Scott emails. Yesterday, they, we worked on a Zoom. They were getting us in two by two. We had, Chris was helping with that, Jason. That led to other issues, like some people may have forgotten their Apple password and their Novus and that kind of thing. Teresa was trying, I mean, everybody was just joining together to try to help, and I'm just so appreciative of everything that's being done. But I did want to speak to your point, because I think it's really important, what you said about things being done differently, and I think we have to be very cognizant of that. If we're able to shut down things for a week and still operate, there's, the public is going to, you know, I've seen comments about college, "Well, if you're able to go online, why are you charging me, you know, $25,000 a year for an education?" I think there's going to be more and more pressure, especially on public institutions and government, to make sure that we are providing a service and we're doing it in the most efficient way possible. So I think we have to be, I just think we have to be aware of that, and I think that's why it's really important to, in any way we can, to continue, you know, I had somebody that reached out to me and was asking about a deadline change, and I wrote, you know, I got a great explanation from the real estate assessment team about, you know, what they were doing. That's what I think we're going to have to continue to do. Like, yes, this is what we're doing remotely, and this is what we're able to do to answer your questions. And I apologize for taking up more time, but I just cannot drive that home enough. So, thank you.
Sue, your turn. Do you have anything?
Hi, just a couple of things. I'll be brief because I know it's kind of hard to communicate this way, and I thank you all for your patience, because I have to do this on a call-in basis. But I just, of course, my thoughts and prayers, and I know, I speak for all of us, to anyone in our community who's been affected by this virus. We know it's hit James City County hard, and we want citizens to know, and especially those affected to know, that we, we're here for you, and you are in our thoughts and prayers. I would like to also echo what Ms. Larson just said about staff. I can't thank you all enough. I know that I have been on the phone with you all more than the past two weeks than forever, but the information you help provide us, we're able to disseminate to the citizens because we're kind of on the front line and we want to be. And so your help helps us to help them. So thank you all for everything you're doing. Just on a little personal level, I'm just, our family, and I'm encouraging everyone just to try to find a few things each day to be grateful for. And I know it can be hard in times like this. We've done a little bit more walking in our neighborhood. It's kind of funny when we've seen more neighbors than we've seen ever forever, and everybody was doing social distancing. It's like the Red Sea is parting when you see somebody come down the street. Everybody moves to the side. But we're all out there, and we're all waving and trying to stay in touch. And, you know, we have a lot of retirees here in our neighborhood, and I just want to, my little silver lining for the evening is that, and I just want to make my husband personally happy, is that the Dow soared more than 11% today, the biggest, headline, biggest one-day jump since 1933. So this too shall pass. I know we're in the throes of it all right now, but we will get through this. We're all working together, and I thank our board, staff, and the community as a whole. Fire, police, everyone, we've all come together to try to do the best we can for the citizens. We appreciate your patience as we muddle through this uncharted territory. But just to my colleagues on the board, thank you for everything you're doing for everyone. Thank you enough. Appreciate it. That's it.
Okay, thank you. I will wrap it up. I'll tell you that one of the things we've done for the April meeting, executive decision, was we had 12 public hearings, four of which we have pushed back to May. And those typically are land use cases, which our attorney is more comfortable, you know, we've got time, we can do those. So what we have set up for April is still eight. Most of them are in-house type items, so we should be able to get through that. And I will touch base with everybody as we get closer to the meeting. Those who would like to participate here, do so. Those who would prefer to participate from remote can do that under our new ordinance, I believe. We still have, okay, good. And I will, again, thank staff for the absolutely yeoman work you all have been doing. And I would like to thank the citizens of Dyer County because I think we have gotten some very understanding, reasoned questions. There are a lot of times people don't understand. I think it's difficult sometimes to give them the full information. It's a job we all have to do as board members, and I hope we can try to continue reaching out and taking input from them and letting them know the reasons why some of the decisions are made the way they are. With that, I think we look to...
Mr. Chair, could I just make a short comment?
Absolutely. I was going to give, although it wasn't there, I was going to say we're going to give the county administrator his two cents.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to share. I do want to just, as you know, we announced yesterday, along with many other Hampton Roads localities, that our county offices would continue to be closed to the public until further notice. That does not mean we're not working. To Ms. Larson's point, we are still responding. We are still here. So I would just encourage you or members of our community, if you have a question or need something from the county, to call us. We are responding. We're doing building inspections. We're mowing the grass. We're picking up recycling. We're responding fire and EMS calls. So we are doing all that we can to continue to provide services. We do have some at home, and we are trying to work on that and make sure they're efficient there and that we're getting our money's worth, and we've put some things in place to sort of monitor that, to make sure we can still provide the service that way, because we're concerned about our workforce. And where we can spread them apart, we're doing that. We're cleaning the high-traffic areas in our office more often. We split people in vehicles and not having four of a vehicle where we used to. We have got one or two to a vehicle, so we've tried to reduce that. And again, we are working to do, to continue the job and to do it in a safe manner. We have closed our playgrounds and sports courts, and I will tell you, we are monitoring those areas. We hope to be able to keep the parks open. I think that's very important, but it probably depends on our residents. We are going in now, and the fields and the sports courts have crowds on them, and they're dispersing pretty easily. But if our parks become overrun and we can't maintain that social distancing and we're concerned about the spread, we'll have to talk more about that. Our intent now is to maintain the parks so that people can go, enjoy the trails, enjoy the open space, and we encourage that. I think it's really, really good for people to do that, along with our beach. There are a lot of localities considering closing their beach. I'm told Yorktown's beach is closed as of today to swimmers and sunbathers. Our beach is a little different. We can really restrict access to the vehicles that come through the gate. So we intend to maintain our beach. It will just be limiting the number. There will come a point where it's full, and it won't look like as many cars in the parking lot because the beach is at capacity to maintain the distance. So we are working hard to keep those kinds of things open. I do, as you said, want to thank our employees for continuing to serve the community. They're doing it a lot of different ways. They've been pretty willing to try things differently. And again, I think we'll continue to do that. And thank you to the residents for taking this seriously and for their patience with us. It is something that we're all working through. And again, my real message is, we're here for you. We're concerned about the community, and we are talking regionally, and we're here to continue to do our jobs, so call us.
Okay. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn until 5:00 PM on April 14, 2020, for a regular meeting.
移到
And we have a motion. Stevens?
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We adjourn.